Hi everyone and welcome to a special session A, focusing on new data sources in price statistics as part of this conference. I'm Sophia Pony, I'm Assistant Deputy Director in Price Division at ONS and I'll be chairing this session. So first of all, I would like to welcome our panelists. So today we'll be having three presentations from Natalie Jones and Amy North on administrative data sources to develop rental price indices, from Joe Corliss on integrating new data sources into ONS consumer prices, and from Chris Payne and Catherine Keane on understanding the impact of changing consumption patterns on consumer price inflation. So each presentation will be 20 minutes and we'll have 10 minutes for questions at the end of each presentation. If you have a question, please use the Q&amp;A facility at the bottom of your screen to submit this, as we don't have the raised hand function today. So if you're then invited to ask your question, I will let you know to ask your question and we will enable you to unmute your microphone. And if you do ask a question, could I please ask everyone to introduce themselves by stating your name and affiliation? And also, I just wanted to let everyone know that the session will be recorded. So with that, we will kick off and I'm handing over to Natalie and Amy for our first presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to share my screen with you. There we go. Is that working?
That's great. Thanks Natalie.
Perfect. Thank you. So hello and thank you for joining our presentation. My name is Natalie Jones. I lead the Housing Market Indices Team in the Office for National Statistics. My team are responsible for producing bulletins such as the House Price Index and the Index for Private Housing Rental Prices. I'm joined here with my colleague Amy North, who has been leading on developing this challenging project of developing our UK rental price indices by utilizing administrative data sources. So today, we will be presenting to you our aims of the project and the challenges we have faced while working on it. So we currently publish two bulletins that look at private rental prices in the UK. So we have our Index of Private Housing Rental Prices that you can see on the left or IPHRP for short. That is a monthly publication and it measures the change in prices that tenants face when renting residential property from private landlords. This includes an index and annual growth for the UK, the four nations and the English regions. We also publish Private Rental Market Summary Statistics or the PRMS for short. This is a bi-annual publication which measures point-in-time rental price estimates for England, the English regions and the English local authorities. Current methodology limitations means it's not appropriate to infer trends year-on-year in the Private Rental Market Summary Statistics. So what have we been doing with our private rental statistics to better meet user needs? We aim to unify the Private Rental Price Statistics by replacing the IPHRP and the PRMS with a new single monthly publication. This new publication will use the latest available data sources to publish Private Rental Price Statistics comparable over time and down to lower geographic levels than are currently available in the IPHRP. In our new publication, we'll be aiming to publish an Index of Private Rental Growth Over Time, Annual Percentage Change and Rental Price Levels. And this will have a breakdown by local authorities, English regions, UK nations and the UK. We also aim to publish a breakdown by bedroom category, for example, studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms and four or more bedrooms. So for example, at the moment, using the Index of Private Housing Rental Prices, we can currently tell you the growth in private rental prices in the southwest. And using the Private Rental Market Summary Statistics, we can tell you the average rental price at a point in time for a private rented property in Cornwall. Using our new methodology that we're currently developing, we will be able to tell you how much the average rental price for private rental property in Cornwall is and how that has grown over time. And we could also look at this by the number of bedrooms. I'm now going to hand you over to my colleague Amy North, who'll be sharing with you how we are achieving this.
Great. Thank you Natalie. So first, I'm going to take you through the administrative data sources that we're using in our proposed methodology. So this is split into mainly three different types of data. The first is our rental price data. So we receive data from all four of the UK nations. So for England, we receive this from the Valuation Office Agency. For Welsh Government, Scottish Government and the Northern Ireland Housing Executive, they provide our rental data for Wales, Scotland and Northern Ireland. This includes the rental price for each property. Rent officers collect the data for these data sets, but it's collected for local housing allowance purposes on a goodwill basis and so not from a randomized statistical sample. And hence, it's not representative of the private rental market as a whole. And this is a challenge that we have to overcome in our methodology, which I'll explain later. This rental price data sets, these cover not only price but property type, information, the furniture status, whether it's furnished or unfurnished, and other variables as well. And it's these data that are used currently in our IPHRP release. However, the development that we're doing is to be able to link these data sets with other property attributes data. So on the top right here, we've got the Valuation Office Agency Cancel Tax Valuation List and the Energy Performance Certificate for Scotland. And so the Valuation Office Cancel Tax Data Set covers England and Wales and has variables such as the number of bedrooms, floor area and property age in. And the EPC data for Scotland has rooms, area and age, similar property attributes. And so by matching and linking these data sets together, we're able to enrich our data source and this will later enable us to produce more granular estimates. Other data sources that we're also data linking to include the National Statistics postcode lookup. So this provides us with a measure for local authority for each property and socio-demographic classification to control for differences at smaller geographic levels than local authority, such as along a street, there may be a more affluent area than otherwise in another part of that street. So then for the methodology, so can I have the next slide please? So the existing methodology used in IPHRP is a match pairs approach. And this was used because it wasn't possible to data link to other sources of data due to access restrictions. So this means that in IPHRP, around about 250,000 records are used to obtain our rental price estimates. However, in the methodology that we're developing, all match records are used, resulting in around 450,000 records being used to calculate our monthly price estimates. This enables calculation of price levels and growth rates down to a more granular level, for example, local authority level than is currently possible in IPHRP, which can only go down to region level due to the lower volumes. Estimates are also going to be improved as the contribution to price from more property attributes is considered, such as floor area and property age, which isn't currently available for IPHRP. I'm going to take you through an overview of the proposed methodology that we've developed. It's based on the House Price Index existing methodology but has been tailored to suit the rental data and its strengths and limitations. So the first step is to data link. So all those data sets have to be matched together. There is no common linking variable such as property ID variable on all of those data sets. So to match the rental price data with the property attributes data, we match by address. And so we have developed an algorithm that will take the property name that has been provided and put it into a standardized format, do the same for both data sets and then match by the property address line and postcode. And that then passes on through to some data cleaning. So this is to check that there haven't been any mismatches. For example, a common mistake is if we've got an attic flat in a property that's been matched to the main property address. So there are some quality assurance checks that identify any possible mismatches or for example, if there's an abnormal price for the area for the property type. We also impute missing values. So for instance, if the number of bedrooms is unknown in the data set, then we populate that using an imputation routine that's been designed and recommended to us by our ONS methodology advisors. Then we move on to hedonic regression. So each month, we run and fit a hedonic regression model onto the latest 14 months of data. Now, in our House Price Index, we run the regression on the latest month of data only. So this is a limitation in our rental price data. So properties visited by the rent officers are not revisited every single month, even though we are producing rental price estimates each month. So to ensure that only true price changes are captured in our measure rather than fluctuations due to composition changes from data collection, a roll in 14 months of data is used to capture this and to ensure that the composition remains fairly constant. And this is already used in IPHRP, which that uses a 14-month data set as well. And we're echoing that in our new proposed methodology. Once the regression model has been run, this quantifies the relationship between the property rental price and its property attributes, for example, bedrooms, age, area, property type and local authority. And then this relationship is then applied to a fixed basket of properties. So each year, we will take the previous 12 months of rental records that we've collected and then the rental price for each of those properties is then estimated each month using each month's associated regression output. So in this way, for each property in our fixed basket, we'll obtain a predicted rental price for January, February, March and so on. And it's this that is then used to calculate our indices and price levels. So we adjust for compositional changes in the fifth step and calculate elementary aggregates. Those aggregates are then aggregated together to produce the average price levels index and growth over time for different levels of aggregation, for example, the UK, four UK nations, regions and local authority among others. We've been consulting with technical experts to ensure that we select the most appropriate methodology and make sure that it's in line with best practice. So this includes consulting with our internal ONS methodology advisors, the Advisory Panel for Consumer Prices Technical Panel and the ESCO Residential Property Price Experts. We have been in discussions with them and collecting and gathering feedback from these experts and actioning them. It's very important that we select the most appropriate methodology and undergo a thorough quality assurance because ultimately, we would like to consider it for use in CPIH inflation measures in the future. There are several regression models for consideration at the moment, all of which are being consulted by our technical experts. And so three such models are the ordinary least squares, the weighted least squares models and random forest regression models. We're also considering inclusion of interaction terms as well. So on the right here is the general formula for a regression model. So P is the rental property price. So we are modeling the logarithm of the rental property price. K is a constant for the intercept. X will be a indicates whether a property, I in this case, has a certain characteristic. So for example, is the property detached or not? If it is detached, then X will be 1, otherwise it will be 0. And then beta is a coefficient associated with that characteristic J. And so for example, if you're moving from a flat to a terrace or semi to a detached property, you expect that price will increase as you go through that process and so our coefficient beta is going to be positive. E is then the statistical error term. And we model rent on several factors. So for X, we are including bedrooms, local authority, property type, area, age, furnished status and socioeconomic classification. So what is a random forest? This consists of multiple decision trees that operate together. So for simplicity, we've included a single decision tree in the diagram on the right here. And so there are multiple of these throughout the random forest itself. Then the random forest is fed the data and it makes decisions to group and split the data in certain ways. So each month, it will decide, okay, is the property furnished or unfurnished? Is it a flat or a detached property? And go through several layers of this. Currently, we have 20 levels. And then finally, when it gets to the last row, that will all those properties in that group that fall within that group, for example, a one-bedroom unfurnished, detached property in Westminster would then be all those properties that fit into that classification will have the average rental price averaged taken from that. And then when this regression is then applied to our fixed basket, then that is the average price that would have been predicted for any properties that fall into that same category. There are several considerations that we have to consider for choosing a model. So since this new methodology will be produced on a monthly basis, we must balance theory with practicalities and the model must be transparent for our users. So we must ensure that it's suitable for regular production, quick to run and produce reliable and robust estimates from month to month. So for instance, random forest may make different decisions about how to split the data every time it's run. So each month, it could make this different decisions. And we've also got to be able to easily quality assure and interpret those, any factors that are affecting price changes. So for example, from the ordinary least squares model or weighted least squares model, they output regression coefficients. And so those coefficients can be compared month to month to identify what is any driving factor, for instance, has the coefficient for flats in Westminster changed? And is that what's driving any change we're observing in London? We also can compare our results with pre-existing rental statistics. We can compare the growth over time in the index we produce against IPHRP for the higher aggregate levels. We can also compare to point-in-time estimates, although as my colleague Natalie said earlier, they cannot be compared over time. And we also must consider the potential-
Sorry, I should say five minutes left.
Okay, thank you. And we shall compare the, have to consider the potential impact on CPIH in future, should this methodology be adopted. There are several challenges to overcome when using administrative data. So this includes, as I mentioned earlier, no common linking variable for property ID between data sets. But it also includes things such as missing data. Fortunately, we have a low missing rate in our data, around about 2%. But there is discussion around whether is it better to impute any missing values we have in these variables and include them in the regression? Or whether we should exclude any observations that are missing, which would then reduce the volumes slightly for use to calculate any estimates. Variables are also measured slightly differently in different data sets. So for example, floor area could be measured to internal or external walls. So it's challenges for how to correctly account for that. And then finally, price data is not collected from a randomized sample. So we must ensure that our estimates are representative of the UK. We do this using mix adjustment. And finally, just like to show you an example for a particular local authority. So you can see here the index for all three models that are currently being considered. So that's the weighted least squares without interactions, weighted least squares with some interaction terms included and the random forest model. And you can see that they all follow a broadly similar pattern, show broadly similar growth. Now, IPHRP does not produce indices down to local authority level, so we can't plot that on this graph. However, if we did, it would show a much straighter line. So this new methodology allows for more sensitivity to price changes and so captures sudden changes in price more fully than IPHRP. So for example, you can see near the end of this time series, a slowdown in growth from March 2020 following the coronavirus impact. And finally, I'll just hand over back to Natalie for our next steps.
Thank you Amy. So we have completed our methodology research and we gained access to the data. And we have also built our prototype model, which we can use to test. As Amy mentioned, we are currently engaging with technical experts and looking to complete our internal methodology ratification. So our methodology is subject to change. Our next steps are to quality assure the new publication outputs, publish an updated development plan and then begin our user consultation period in the summer. Following this, we will publish our initial set of analysis and collect user feedback. Thank you for joining our presentations. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much, both Natalie and Amy. And so I would encourage, if you have any questions, to pop them in the Q&amp;A box at the bottom. And first, we have Tony Cox. If the host can unmute him, please, to ask his question.
Hello. Yeah, my question concern is really concerned with the use of the data. If this is an improved method of producing rental prices, that's great. But can you explain the extent to which the statistics you produce correlate with actual house prices firstly? And secondly, how it correlates with the total cost of home ownership for owner occupiers? Because in CPIH, of course, the rental prices are used as a proxy for the total cost of home ownership.
Natalie, if I start on this one, perhaps you might finish. So to answer your first part, can you describe how closely rental prices correlate with house prices? So because our methodology is still under development, the results are subject to change. So on that second-to-last slide where we were showing an example for a local authority, then you can see that there are, we are predicting slightly different growths depending on which model we use. So we can't answer that just yet. Natalie, would you like to-
Yeah, thank you Amy. So this presentation is covering the rental price development. In the future, we will be considering the use in OH, but at the moment, that's not what we're here to present on. But I'm sure we will do some more user consultation periods on that as well.
Thank you very much. We have a further question from Shaun Richards. If he can be-
Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to ask a question about the rolling series of rental data that we have. Because this matters because it also goes into the imputed rents and rental equivalents in CPIH. So you said in, I believe it was Amy, that you use a rolling 14 months of data. And there's a mismatch there between the house price data, which is one month. And there is also an issue over when you say that, for example, in the latest figures, this is March rental numbers. In fact, it's the previous 14 months, isn't it? So will you be able, going forwards, to present a one-month number that is that month? If you see what I mean. So March 2021 for March 2021? Or will you remain 14 months back? Sorry, that's a long question.
That's okay. So our aim is to publish the stock of rents. So what is happening in the whole stock, not the flow? The flow would be the one-month rents, that's the new rentals that are coming onto the market. But our aim is to publish the stock, so what people pay in. So we are assuming here that people's rents are fixed for approximately 14 months. So that's what our methodology covers.
And I'd just like to, for any potential impact on CPIH, that is the same assumption that is made currently in our rental price estimates in IPHRP. So there's no change from that. It was discussed at our ONS Methodology Advisory Group and the decision was made that this was still the best approach to, as Natalie said, produce a stock measure.
May I ask a second question on that?
Please go ahead.
Well, because that is effectively, I realize that you're coming into a long discussion here, but that's effectively misleading because you're presenting one month's inflation figures when in fact, it's 14 months, isn't it?
So the users would be made clear that this would be based on the 14-month stock measure rather than the flow, as you would call it.
Well, that would be a change for the better because these numbers have been used for some time. And in fact, ONS has actively hidden that fact rather than producing it. And I would guarantee you that outside of ONS, there might be 10 people that realize this.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you for your feedback. We'll make sure to make sure it's clear in our publications.
Thank you. Are there any further questions to put in the chat, please? If there are no further questions, we will move on to the next presentation from Joe Corliss. Thank you very much Natalie and Amy.
Thank you.
Hand over to you, Jo.
Thanks. Does someone else have to start my video? I can't seem to do it.
I think it would be, I think it would be you, although Sarah, as the host, if you're able to help us with this one.
There we go. Okay, I'm just at my screen. Can you see me? Because I can't see my own video right now.
Yes, we can see you.
Okay, but not your screen. Now we can see your screen. Thank you, Jo.
Okay, so hi, my name's Joe Corliss and I'm from the Consumer Prices Methods Transformation Team in Prices Division at ONS. And so in this presentation, I'm going to be talking about the integration of new data sources into the consumer price statistics at ONS. So this is a really ambitious transformation program, which is aiming to take advantage of big new data sources to improve the measurement of consumer price inflation. So for some context, I'll start by talking about how we measure consumer price inflation now. So to measure inflation, we measure the price change for a sample of goods and services, which we refer to as a basket of goods. So the basket contains over 700 items, which are chosen to represent all the goods and services that consumers in the UK spend their money on. The prices are collected across a sample of locations and retailers in the UK. So we have price collectors in the field who go to physical stores to get the price quotes. And we also have office staff who collect price quotes online or by phone. In total, there are about 180,000 price quotes collected each month for the current collection. So what is changing? So we're currently working through a comprehensive transformation program for consumer price statistics to modernize their measurement and make better use of the data and methods that are becoming more available to us. So this will be the largest change to consumer price statistics in the generation. At a high level, the transformation involves obtaining robust sources of alternative data, developing statistical systems to work with these data and carrying out methodological research to construct high-quality price indices from these new data sources. The new data sources will be used in conjunction with the traditionally collected data, so they won't replace them completely. The aim is to improve the accuracy and the representativity of our inflation statistics. So what data sources are we pursuing? Well, there are two different types, scanner data and web scrape data. Scanner data is transaction data that's held by retailers. And so it's a comprehensive set of all the transactions made by the retailer. And it includes information like the number of units sold per product, the total expenditure per product, et cetera. Web scrape data is data that is extracted from a website using automated tools. So it typically contains all the types of information you would see displayed on a retailer's website. Both these data sources are very large compared to the samples that we have now. So the scale of the data now versus the data that we will have is kind of like comparing Leicester to China. So that's kind of increase in scale that we're talking about. So what are the benefits of scanner data and web scrape data and how do they compare with each other? I'm just going to mention some of the key benefits. I'm just going to mention some of the key benefits. So data acquisition, so once the feeds or scrapes are set up, then this is automated for web scraped and scanner data. So they take a lot less manual effort than traditional collection. The new sources are also more complete. So scanner data gives us a census of all transactions for a particular retailer rather than a sample. And web scraping also allows us to get data for a very large number of products at a time. And the new sources also give coverage over the whole month, whereas the manual collection takes place over just one to three days of the month. The prices that we get are also slightly different. So for traditional collection and web scraping, we get the advertised price or the shelf price. Whereas for scanner data, we can calculate the average price actually paid. So this can take into account more types of discounts, for example, than we do now, like multi-buy discounts. And finally, scanner data provides quantity information, so how many products were sold, which the others don't. And that means that we're able to weight products according to their importance from the very lowest level. So for this reason, scanner data is often considered the gold standard in prices data. And but while the new data sources have a lot of advantages over the traditional collection, there are cases where the traditional methods are the only practical option. So for example, businesses that don't have an online presence, like greengrocers or butchers, window cleaners, we would have to collect with the traditional kind of methods. And so it's still important to carry out our local collection to cover these areas. So this diagram shows the planned future aggregation structure for CPI and CPIH, or a part of it. So the key point here is that we're not replacing the traditional collection. We are integrating the three types of data sources all together. So we've got scanner data, web scrape data, locally collected data, all being aggregated together. And we're also future-proofing our methods by stratifying by region, so that we'll be able to produce regional indices in the future. So what are our methods for, what are our plans for methods and data transformation? So these are the item categories that we're targeting for alternative data sources at the moment. So the percentages on the slides are the weight of each item out of the whole of CPIH. So you can see the largest areas are groceries of 12.4% and clothing is 4.3%. So this is the timeline for the alternative data sources implementation. In 2020, we focused on research into various methods, which we need to make our indices high quality, and also developing a pipeline to process the data. In 2021, we're finishing the research phase and developing our pipeline further to implement the new methods, as well as starting the application phase where we'll apply our methods for the different item categories. Next year, we're planning to carry out a parallel run with the new data sources alongside the current production process and release quarterly experimental estimates of inflation using the new data sources. And then in 2023, we'll go live with any categories that are considered to be ready by our advisory panels on consumer prices and the Office for Statistics Regulation. So that's to be decided during 2022. We do still have some tricky challenges to overcome. So it's likely that not all of our priority categories will go live in 2023. So we need new methods to process the new data sources, partly because the new data sources are so much larger than the old ones, that we need more automated methods for handling them. We've made really good progress with scanner data research in particular, and have been able to mostly productionise methods to produce indices using scanner data. There are still some methods in development though, particularly for web scrape data. So the streams of ongoing research are classification. So this includes through using machine learning techniques, I'm going to be talking about that in a bit more detail later. Index number methods, so we've developed a framework for choosing which index number method to use. This is currently being peer reviewed in an ESCO research project. And expenditure proxies, so because we don't have weights for web scrape data, we're trying to approximate these to make sure that products are weighted according to their economic importance. And then scanner data research is methods to account for returns and discounts, and also to link product relaunches. And I'm going to come back to that later. Product grouping, so this is needed because we can't manually choose replacements for disappearing products like in the traditional collection. And so instead, for items with high churn, like clothing, we'll track groups of similar products over time rather than individual products. And then outlier detection and imputation. So this is to identify and remove or validate outliers and identify appropriate imputation methods for missing data. And then finally, retailer weights, this aims to find data sources that will allow us to weight retailers together with traditionally collected data. So I'm now going to do a deep dive into two of the research areas that I've just mentioned, starting with classification. So classification is one of our biggest and most challenging work streams. And the goal is to classify products in our data to their appropriate consumption segment. And for example, classifying a jumper to the jumpers segment. So consumption segments are the equivalent of items in the current basket of goods, but a little bit broader. And within those segments, we would then use things like product codes or apply further methods like product grouping to make sure that we're comparing like with like. So the diagram on the slide shows how different classification methods are needed for the different item categories, depending on the characteristics of the data sets. And in the next few slides, I'm just going to briefly go through each type of classification that we're proposing to use. So the first is attribute-based classification. And this can be used when a data set contains attributes which can be directly used to break the data set up into consumption segments. So for example, for a package holidays data set, if we had a consumption segment for European holidays and one for other international holidays, then we could use a destination variable to split the data set in the way that we need. So this is one of the more straightforward classification methods. A second type is keyword classification. So some data sets are mostly made up of data from a single consumption segment that we're interested in, but the retailer also cross-sells other related products alongside them. And so we want to remove products that are out of scope. And we can do that by using keywords that appear in those products. So for example, if we have a data set for desktop computers, then we might also find products like computer mice and keyboards being sold in the data. So we would use keywords like mouse and keyboard to filter out those items. So the last two methods I'm going to talk about are for data sets that are more complex as they have lots of consumption segments and they can't easily be classified using attributes. So the most complex method that we're pursuing is supervised machine learning based classification. So for clothing, there are a lot of new products appearing in the data each month. So it would be very time consuming to manually label all the products. So we're using supervised machine learning to classify these data sets, which involves labelling a training set of products to train an algorithm to classify the data automatically. So we label the data using an app that's been developed in-house, as is shown on the slide. And so far, we've labelled about 130,000 data points and our classifier is correctly classifying products over 80% of the time. And so it's doing quite a good job, but there's still work ongoing to try and improve the accuracy of the classifier further. And then lastly, we've got machine assisted manual classification. So for groceries, although there are a lot of consumption segments, the number of new products per month is quite low. So we're taking a manual approach to classifying this data. So we're labelling the data using the same app as for the clothing data. But since there are more categories for groceries, the app has been designed to show the labeler only the categories likely to be relevant and to speed up the process. Hence why we say it's machine assisted. And so so far, we've fully labelled the grocery data for one of our scanner retailers in only about one and a half months. So we've made good progress here. Now I'm going to do a deep dive into two aspects of our research with scanner data, relaunch linking and discounts. So products tend to be relaunched from time to time. So for example, when product packaging changes or there are small changes to the product size, that would be an example of a relaunch. So when constructing price indices, we want to continue to track a product when it's relaunched. Because if there's a price change or a weight change when the relaunch happens, then we need to capture any impact this has on inflation. So we have different product IDs available to us in the data. And one is an internationally defined Gtin, which is the code associated with barcodes. And another is the SKU, which is the retailer's own product code. And so for at least one of the scanner data retailers, the SKUs capture more product relaunches than the Gtin. And in other words, the SKU doesn't change when a relaunch happens, but the Gtin does. So we investigated how using either the Gtin or the SKU to identify products for this retailer affected the indices produced. So these indices were made using data from a single UK grocery retailer, who has given us permission to share this analysis. So the graphs compare indices made using the Gtin or the SKU as the unique product identifier for children's sweets and children's chocolate. So these are just two examples that I've picked. And so since the SKUs capture more relaunches for this retailer, we thought that they might find, we might find indices were higher when we used the SKU because we thought products might be more likely to go up in price or down in weights when they're relaunched. And however, we found that the results were mixed. And so for example, on the left for children's sweets, the index using the SKU diverges upwards. But on the right for children's chocolate, the index using Gtin diverges upwards. And when we aggregated all the low-level indices up to all food and drink for this retailer, we found that there was no overall bias in either direction. But in principle, we still want to make sure that we are capturing as many relaunches as possible because there's still potential for bias to arise from this. So from manually scrutinising the data, we think it's likely that not all product relaunch is being captured within the same SKU for this retailer or the other retailers. And so we're currently developing a tool which aims to identify relaunches by matching the text in the product descriptions as well as matching on other attributes. So this tool would calculate match scores between the new and old products and suggest possible relaunches where it finds a high match score. So the example on the slide, which just uses some made-up data, shows how products with a very similar name would get a high match score and be suggested as a potential relaunch. And products with less similar names would get a low match score and not be relaunch candidates. The prototype linking tool that we've made seems to so far be doing quite a good job at identifying relaunches, but it isn't perfect. So we think that in production, we would have to do manual checking of the suggested matches to make sure that we don't link things wrongly. So now I'm going to talk about discounts. So in our current. Okay, thanks. In our current consumer price indices, temporary price promotions, like £3 reduced to £2.50, are accounted for, but multi-buy promotions aren't included because we don't know how often multi-buy offers are taken up by consumers. And we also don't currently account for things like loyalty card discounts or staff discounts for the same reasons. But because scanner data contains the actual expenditure on products after discounts are applied, then the prices that we derive from scanner data account for all of these types of discounts. And some of our retailers are able to break down the value of their sales according to different discount types, which means that we're able to look at the impact of different discount types on our price indices. So we ran indices which included either price promotions or multi-buy offers, while excluding the other offer type to see what impact each of these offer types had. So these low-level indices for olive oil and berries demonstrate that the prevalence of different discount types depends on the item category. So for olive oil on the left, the price promotions introduce a lot of volatility, while multi-bys have no impact. And for berries on the right, multi-bys introduce the volatility and price promotions have very little impact. We found that in general, price promotions had a bigger impact on more categories of products than multi-bys did for this retailer. So we then wanted to aggregate up to see what impact promotions had on inflation for food and drink more broadly. So this index is the overall aggregate for food and non-alcoholic beverages from mid-2017 to January 2021. So we can see from this that the index including price promotions, which is the green line, is significantly higher than the index without any promotions, which is the brown line, implying that over this period, price promotions had a significant impact on inflation. So in other words, there's been more of an increase in prices for products on price promotion than products not on price promotion. And on the other hand, the index including multi-bys, which is the blue line, tracks closely with the index without promotions, implying these discounts didn't have a big impact. So to see whether the impact of price promotions is sustained or just concentrated at certain points in time, we can look at annual growth rates. So this chart shows the annual growth rates for the indices on the previous slide. We can see that over the whole time period, price promotions quite consistently have an upwards impact on the growth rate. So the green line is usually higher than the brown line, although not always. So this implies that the level of discounting is reducing, either because the number of discounted products is reducing or because the size of the discounts has decreased. And this seems to be an important contributor to the overall inflation for this retailer. And another interesting period in this graph is between February 2020, so here, and April 2020 at the start of the pandemic. So we can see that the annual growth for the index with price promotions and the index of multi-bys both increased more sharply than the growth for the index without promotions. So this implies that a reduction in discounting contributed to an increase in the inflation rate over that period for this retailer. So now I'm going to briefly talk about the systems we've been developing to process our new data sources. So we've developed a new processing pipeline on a distributed processing platform, which can process over 900 million rows of data. It uses a modular approach with separate modules for each different method that needs to be applied. And we're now adding new configurations to some of the modules based on our research. We're also developing a pipeline that will process the traditional data sources simultaneously, so that they can all be processed on the same platform. And this is just a draft overview of our modular pipeline, which takes us all the way from raw data to the final item index. And we're still finalising the ordering of the modules and their dependencies on one another. So now I'm going to briefly talk about our plans going forwards. So to manage the risk around the transformation process, we'll be carrying out impact analyses and a parallel run. So our general approach will be to do historical impact analysis, where there are changes to the methods or the data, and a parallel run on the new and old systems, where there are changes to the systems and the production process. And the plan for the parallel run is to complete one full year in 2022. After 2023, the rollout of alternative data sources will continue. So we're planning to increase the use of alternative data sources in the existing priority categories by adding more retailers and continue a programme of research on methods. And finally, roll out new data sources to new item categories. So a potential list of new categories is on the slide. So in summary, the new data. So in summary, the new data sources have a lot of advantages over the traditional data sources, but they won't fully be replacing them. We're planning to incorporate the new data and methods into our official inflation measures in 2023. And there's still a lot of research and development left to go before we get there, and we do have a few challenges to overcome. So we don't know yet which categories will definitely be ready by 2023, but we are quite confident that we can at least begin to introduce new sources by then. And now, any questions?
That's great. Thank you very much, Jo. So we do have some questions in the chat and could I ask that we go to Jill Leyland first?
Thank you. Thank you for a very interesting and very clear presentation. My question is concerning clothing. Clothing, of course, has been a real problem for anybody compiling a price index because of the of the price swings in it. And I wondered if you were making, particularly for what's known as fashion clothing, any distinction between when you classify between full price articles and then those that are have a price reduction. I'm not talking here about the sort of temporary discounts that you mentioned later, but in fashion clothing typically, a new product enters the market at full price. And then if it doesn't all sell in fairly quickly, you get discounts, often very substantial discounts. And this, of course, provokes a lot of variability, which is difficult to handle. It, I wondered if this gave the opportunity of, for example, simply comparing full price with full price items and then discounted items with discounted items, which might then enable you to have a sort of, well, to handle the following, the the price, to give you a dataset that's easier to handle and to get a sort of true idea of how prices are moving.
Okay. And so I'm not sure exactly how we're planning to take into account the sale prices. Our general approach for clothing is to use grouping methods. So we'd group similar items together. And then as products sort of leave the market, and they would drop out of that group and then new products coming in would replace them. And I think that method is supposed to account for these problems that we have with clothing and the high rate of churn. As for whether there are plans to drop products out of the groups if they have like a drastic reduction in price, I'm not sure what the exact methods are planned, but I can inquire about that and give your feedback on that to the people that are leading that research stream.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can we go to Tony Cox next?
Hi, yeah, thanks for the presentation. I've got a quick question about the weights that you apply, particularly to the web scrape data. I think I saw in your slide that you apply a weight that you attain obtained from the retailers, i.e. from the scanner data. I just wanted to check if if that was correct. Or if it's not as simple as that, if it's integrated with other sources of weight data that you've got. That was my main question. The second query, if I may, was just as a consumer, is a takeaway from your presentation that I should avoid items that are on price promotion? Thanks.
And not that you should avoid items on price promotion, but that they might not have quite as good price promotions as they used to. Yeah. And that's only for that one retailer, so I can't speak for the others. As for your question on web scrapes data, and so weighting the web scrape data is one of the biggest challenges that we've still got to sort of overcome. So we don't have. Sorry, is this waiting at the lowest level or waiting the retailers? I should just ask. Like waiting the products or waiting the retailer?
Yeah, I guess the concern is the weight at the product level.
Okay, yeah. And so this is our expenditure proxies research work stream. And basically, they're trying to come up with approximate weights for the data at the product level. And so they've tried a couple of different techniques, like using the product page rankings on the website. So assuming that products at the top of the page sell more than products at the bottom. And but that wasn't very successful. And they're now going to look at price banding as an approach. And so I think this is assuming that products which have sort of a price, products at a price point which are the most common, sorry, not phrasing this very well. They assume that they would sell more than products that sort of extreme price points. And but this is a work stream that's still very much ongoing and we don't have an answer yet.
Okay, can I just clarify then? It's not as simple as just taking the scanner data that doesn't contain weights and applying that to the web scrape data.
Okay, so the problem is that we don't usually have scanner data and web scrape data for the same retailers. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jo. And I should say, I did say this in the beginning, but could I remind attendees to please introduce themselves when they're asking their questions and going forward. So next question is from Keshav Bhattarai, please.
Hi. This is a very nice presentation. There are some new elements on this one. Particularly, this is G10, glow on trade identification number. And you have a stock keeping unit, SKU. Now, from the recording point of view, it is extremely important that these are not mixed. You said that the producers can issue the SKU and then they can go to the G10. So what makes sure that they are correctly identified? So they are not mixed up or there are no duplication and other thing like that. Would you please just explain?
Okay.
I see that a GT is somehow like a ISBN number, you know, in the book academia. Like the ISBN or something like that. So it is the similar thing for the products.
Yes, so the G10 is defined by an organisation called GS1. So they define them internationally. So, yeah, they are like set outside of the retailer's control. And there are checks you can do on them to check their validity. So it's to, yeah, checks that you can do on their actual numbers themselves. So we can do that for starters. In terms of the SKUs, they are controlled by the retailers. So there isn't the same sort of international standardisation across them. But we are like carrying out checks on the data to see how their SKUs are actually used. So that's how we sort of confirmed that the data for the retailer that I showed an example of, the SKUs are capturing quite a lot of the relaunches, although not quite all of them. Whereas another retailer, their SKU might not capture as many relaunches. So we do have to treat them slightly differently. Or at least our relaunch linking methods will probably pick up more cases for some retailers than others. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, since this is an issue of measurement, right? I mean, is there a possibility that the discrepancy between one measure and another measure? You know, if you have a export import volume like this based on GTN and based on SKU, should they match or, I mean, if, you know, do they match? That is, I think that is why I asked this question.
I don't quite follow the question, I'm afraid.
Means the question is about the measurement because these are the items identifying numbers. So underlying them is the value of the product and the volumes. So in total, I mean, so in total, in aggregate, so whatever is produced globally, the total value of the global output, you know, should be the same whether whichever measure you use, SKU or GTN, you know, GTN. So but because of the recording system, they may be different, you know. So what is the possibility of that is too diverse? And so that is my question, you know, whether it makes sense, I don't know.
I don't know. In our dataset, like we have the SKU and G10 available for all products. So the total expenditure in like using either code would be the same, but I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, if you do seven, that is no problem. Yeah, that is. Thank you. Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, Keshav. And thank you, Jo, for the presentation. We do now have to move on to our next presentation. So Chris Payne and Catherine Keane will be talking to us about changing consumption patterns.
Thank you. Hopefully you can see my video okay and I will just share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay.
That's great. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my name's Chris Payne. I lead a consumer prices development team at the Office for National Statistics. And I'm going to be talking with my colleague Catherine Keane, who's the Lead Economist on Prices Analysis. And we're planning to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that we've done around the COVID-19 pandemic. And as this session is on new data sources, we want to try and focus on how we've used different, different areas of data to try and inform our analysis and the work that we've done. So three main topics that we're going to walk through. Initially, I'm just going to give a little bit of background on how we've approached inflation measurement over the course of the pandemic. This is really just, just by way of setting the scene. We're then going to move into sharing some of the supplementary analysis that we've provided to sit alongside our main measures. And we'll just summarise at the, we'll just at the end touch on some of the process that we followed for updating the weights in our consumer prices basket for 2021 and how we've incorporated pandemic estimates into that. So just to cover a little bit of our pandemic response initially. So obviously, the the COVID-19 pandemic has brought some quite widespread changes across the economy and our society and has created challenges in all kinds of sectors. And inflation measurement is no different. And there's a number of challenges we've had to respond to or address, which I just said out here. The first problem we faced was that our price collectors, who would normally go out to visit stores to collect prices from those stores and follow them over time, couldn't do that, obviously, because of government movement restriction policies. They were unable to visit stores in the usual way. And so we had to respond to that quite quickly. And so we moved our price collection predominantly online, where a website was available, our price collectors would collect a price from that website. But where that wasn't possible, they would try and contact the store by phone instead to try and get a price. The second challenge was that portions of the consumer prices basket suddenly became unavailable to consumers. So I think it's important to note, this is different from just prices being missing. Quite often, when we're unable to collect prices in our sample because they're missing, it simply means that the item's out of stock or we can't identify a price for something that we know is being sold. This situation is different because these products were completely unavailable to consumers to purchase. So in that sense, the the price itself is actually undefined. And for a fixed basket index, that that creates some challenges. And then the final challenge was that once you sort of take these unavailable items out of the equation, other areas of the baskets in big shifts in consumer spending. And it meant that our basket didn't look that representative anymore of what people are actually buying. So I guess one obvious solution would be just to to change the basket, to update the basket, to reflect what what people are buying at the moment. But actually, the the truth is, it was a lot more complicated than that, and that wasn't necessarily the best way to to proceed. I've noted down a few of the issues here. So firstly, it just means that our measurement basis is inconsistent. So we have quite a sort of set procedure where we update the basket every year, bring in new weights, and the basket remains fixed for the rest of the year. And then we compare, we look at annual growths, and so we'll compare across the basket with the year before. As soon as we start trying to to change baskets within within years, it sort of complicates this picture and confounds interpretation of the index. So it wasn't necessarily a straightforward thing to do. Another consideration here, and I'm just jumping down to the third bullet point, is is international best practice. So this was, this was an international challenge. Obviously, COVID-19 has affected countries across the world. So so what are other countries doing? What is the the kind of gold standard for inflation measurements? It's important that everyone applies procedures in a consistent way so that we can understand the differences across countries as well as within countries. And also, we can learn from other countries and we can pool expertise and look at what people are doing. So we also looked internationally to see what people are doing. Another area is just the conceptual challenges that sit alongside changing the basket. So when the pandemic hit, it was April 2020 was the first index that was affected by by the the sort of pandemic restrictions. And so at that point in time, we had an annual weight based on a lag of of two years. And all we knew at the time was what spending in April 2020 looked like. So how on earth would you apply that to an annual basket, to an annual set of weights? And why should spending in April look like annual spending? The reason we use annual weights is to to eliminate any kind of seasonality. Whereas if we if we tried to to adjust for spending changes, as in April 2020, we'd have all kinds of seasonality issues in there. So and that that's just an example of some of the kind of conceptual considerations we had to to think about. And it really just wouldn't have worked, I don't think. And another consideration, the final bullet here, is that the the consumer prices basket tends to change month on month with government policies. So we've seen that the position in April 2020 wasn't fixed. Actually, it's changed as as sort of lockdowns have waxed and waned and people have been able to do more or less and the proportion of unavailable items has increased and decreased. And so things have changed on a month on month basis. And it was impossible from our position in April 2020 to know, to have known just what an annual weight for 2020 would have looked like. The next chart just illustrates that actually. And I like to think quite often, our consumer prices basket and the annual updates to the basket are seen as a a bit of a barometer of changing consumer trends. I like to think that looking at the proportion of unavailable items in our basket on a month by month basis kind of gives us a picture of the pandemic and how things have unfolded. So you can see here that in April 2020, we had just over 16% of our basket was unavailable. And that was the strictest lockdown and it's the the sort of month when most of the the largest proportion of the basket was unavailable. That steadily decreased over the next couple of months until we found ourselves in July, when it dropped right down to just under 2%. August, September and October, we were able to resume a field collection. But then by November again, we were starting to see more movement restrictions in place and the number of unavailable items in the basket increased again. And so I think this picture just shows how much it's changed from month to month. One other point to note is that there's two Janaries on the chart. The reason for that is one is on the old weights basis and one is on the new weights basis. So the 2021 estimates aren't necessarily comparable with the 2021s. So I've put January on both bases here so you can get a sense of what's happening across the two. So we decided not to change the basket, but then the the challenge to that would be is the basket we've got actually relevant to current consumer experience. And I think, I think that's a fair challenge, actually. You know, we want our inflation measures to be relevant to what people are experiencing. So how can we how can we help our inflation measures to be relevant when we're working off a fixed basket in the middle of a pandemic? Well, the solution that that we came upon was was a sort of two-pronged approach, if you like. So for our main index, we kept our fixed basket, but we imputed the items that were unavailable in such a way that they would have a negligible impact on the measured rate of inflation. So what we're saying is that the things that are unavailable So what we're saying is that the things that are unavailable, we don't want them to make a contribution to the headline inflation rate. But alongside that, we produce supplementary analysis that would try and help users to understand how spending changes have might have impacted on our headline measures of inflation. This table just gives a little summary of some of the supplementary analysis that we produced. So the first row is our faster indicators. So we use some of our web scrape data to try and produce weekly estimates of inflation to try and give an early indication of what's happening. The second one, which we're going to expand on in this presentation, is our reweighted basket, where we looked at how spending had changed on a month by month basis. And we tried to incorporate a sort of monthly changing basket and apply that to our inflation indices to try and get a sense of how spending changes might have impacted inflation. And then there's various other bits and pieces of analysis in this table as well, which I won't cover in a great amount of detail. But there are some other measures out there as well that hopefully add some value. So we're going to look now at the reweighted basket. And Catherine's going to share some results with you in a minute. But initially, I just wanted to walk you through the approach that we used for calculating the reweighted basket. And so the idea was, we took the CPI H weights and the CPI weights, and we simply modified them to reflect monthly changes in consumer spending on a monthly basis. And what we'd then do is we'd recalculate the monthly growth in the index using these monthly changes. So this is using PASH weights, so current period weights rather than base period weights. And then we would chain link these monthly growths on to the the long run published series to try and get at a 12-month growth rate based on pandemic baskets. One issue that I did just want to touch on is chain drift. So chain linking is basically a method for applying the monthly growth to your long run series. It just means you're you're taking that monthly growth and you're growing the long run index by that amount. But one problem with chain linking is chain drift. And this can become particularly pronounced if you are frequently chaining. So if you're doing it on a monthly basis, and what it means is that your estimates will start to drift away from where they would be had you measured the index directly by comparing with earlier periods directly. And so for our published estimates, what we've done is we've derived a rechain CPI H series. Because if we if we compared our reweighted basket series directly with the CPI, that would include an element of chain drift. So to to try and eliminate the chain drift from the analysis, what we've done is we've rechain CPI H on a monthly basis, the same way that we've done for the reweighted basket, and then we've compared those to give impact estimates. Just wanted to touch on some of the data sources that we've used to do the analysis as well. So this shows the proportion of the basket that we adjusted using various different data sources. You can see that the highest bar was unadjusted, so about 37% of the basket was unadjusted. It's worth mentioning that a large proportion of that that amount in the gray bar is actually all rents and owner occupied housing costs, which we didn't feel would be heavily impacted. And so a large proportion of the unadjusted area is accounted for by that. On the good side, we mostly use retail sales index data. So that gave us quite a good sort of monthly data source that we could use to understand monthly spending changes. And then on the services side, we used a range of different data sources. Most prominently, we used financial transaction data, which is some new data sources that we've been exploring in the office. They're provided by companies like Barclays PLC and Revolut, who provide us with transaction data. We use that to adjust a lot of the services side of the basket. I'm going to pass you over to Catherine now, who will take you through some of the results.
Thanks, Chris. So this table here is our main results from reweighting the basket. It looks the difference between the 12-month growth rate for the reweighted basket and the rechain official measure for both CPI H and CPI in each month that we did this analysis. We can see that overall, the effect of reweighting the basket is relatively small. The biggest difference that we saw in any single month was for CPI H in May at 0.11 percentage points. But overall, every other month, we had less than a 0.1 percentage point difference. That's despite quite big changes to the underlying assumptions around expenditure. And also, it's quite notable that the differences have gone in both directions. So in some months, the reweighted basket had a higher inflation rate, and in some months, it had a lower one. So there's no standard direction of it being skewed. And this, Chris just gave you a sneak preview, there you go. This headline, small difference captures the net difference. But we can see when we look in more detail that each of the components actually moves in a different way as well. So this looks the difference in the contribution to the 12-month rate of CPI H between the reweighted and the rechain official series for each division of CPI H. We looked at April to May for this chart, because that was the beginning of the pandemic, where we saw some of the biggest differences. And what we can actually see is, for most of the time in these three months, the most of the components made stronger positive contributions in the reweighted series than in the official series, with the exception being transport and restaurants and hotels, which were some of the most heavily affected by the pandemic, and almost offset the increases that we saw in the others. Move on to the next one, Chris. Thanks. So this table looks in some more detail at the weights for each of the components in each month. So what we've got here is the standard weights in under normal weights column, which is the annual weights Chris was talking about earlier. And then for each month, our reweighted basket weights for each of the components. And along the bottom, we also have the total expenditure as a proportion of February total. And this is because, in addition to seeing changes in the pattern of expenditure, we saw that overall total consumer spending fell for most people during the beginning of the pandemic. So we skip to the next one. Thanks. So we can see that for some components, they saw quite big increases in April in their expenditure weight. So for example, food, non-alcoholic beverages, alcohol and tobacco, and housing and household services all saw increased weights in April. And this is due to a combination, in a lot of cases, of actually increased expenditure, but also a rescaling effect. When the total expenditure value decreased, a fixed expenditure level would account for a higher proportion of the total. And you can see that notably in housing and household services, that saw a very high increase in its weight. And that includes some of the bigger components like energy bills, which we don't assume assume to have changed that much, but account for a much higher proportion of total expenditure when the total pot is smaller. And next one, Chris.
Five minutes left.
Okay, thanks. So conversely, we can see that some components saw smaller weights. Examples here are clothing and footwear, transport, recreation and culture, and restaurants and hotels. And again, some of this is due to reduced demand. We saw particularly clothing and footwear, that people were buying fewer clothes during the lockdowns. But then also, for some things like recreation and culture and restaurants and hotels, this reflects the unavailable items that were removed from the basket in our reweighted measure. And next one. Thanks. So what we see then, as the expenditure returns to more like normal levels in September, as a lot of the lockdowns unwound, we see that for a lot of the components, the expenditure weights look a lot more like their normal 2020 levels. And I think it's the last one, yeah. Okay, so this just looks at the total expenditure that I'm talking about and how that changed over the course of the pandemic. So what we can see is, in April, we had a very sudden drop in the total expenditure of households. And actually, people were spending around only around two thirds of what they would typically have been spending in April. And this increased gradually throughout the summer, going back up to around 100% in September. After that, we saw more lockdowns and restrictions coming back in in October, November. But it didn't drop to the same level as we saw in April. And this probably reflects a range of factors such as the strictness of the lockdown and how many items are unavailable, the level of uncertainty that we're all experiencing during the first lockdown. And then also, we saw some innovative alternative substitutes arriving that were not there in the beginning of the lockdown, which gave people more opportunity to spend. And that's it for the results. I'll hand back to Chris.
Thank you. So just for the last bit of the presentation, we just wanted to add something on how we approached the weights update for 2021. So as I mentioned, we update the weights every year. This normally happens in in January, and we make some tweaks in February as well. And normally, we'd base the weights on national accounts expenditure data from two years previously. Normally, that would give us a pretty good reflection of what spending looked like the previous year, because spending tends to change quite slowly. Obviously, with the pandemic, that that's a slightly different issue. And spending in the base year 2020 obviously looks quite dramatically different from 2019. So the approach we took was the the one sort of set out by Eurostat, where we tried to update our 2020 spending data to reflect 2020 spending as much as we could, using a range of data sources, but primarily quarters one, two and three of household spending data. This is just some details on how we did it, which I won't go into in the interests of time. But I will just say that we what we did was, we we set a threshold to look at where the the most heavily affected spending categories were. And for those most heavily affected spending categories, we used our 2020 estimate, where we didn't have significant evidence of a shift in spending, we used the 2019 estimate. This chart shows you the categories that we did adjust and the the sort of scale of the change that we saw in the 2020 data relative to the 2019 data. And I think as a sense check, the the stuff that we adjusted looked like the stuff that we should be adjusting. And so that was relatively reassuring. So you can see the most heavily affected areas were package holidays and air and sea transport, which I think is quite an intuitive one that you'd see there. We've also got things like restaurants and cafes and canteens in the list. And fuels and lubricants obviously covers petrol, that kind of thing. This chart just shows you the weights against previous years. So the brown line is our 2021 weights. And then the blue lines are the previous three years weights. And so you can see that in previous years, they tend to be quite close together, whereas we've seen some bigger jumps this year because of the pandemic. And just finally, we did some quality assurance around our estimates as well. So we took it through our technical advisory panel and also held internal QA sessions within prices, but also with national accountants. And we use some of the data sources that I've talked about for the reweighted basket analysis to add a further layer of assurance to our estimates. So we checked that things were moving in similar ways against the, so the financial transaction data, but also retail sales data, GDP data as well. And that gave us an extra layer of assurance on our weights. Finally, just to note as well, we did produce a counterfactual estimate. So we we were also able to calculate weights on the basis that we would normally have used, based on purely on 2019 household spending data. So we can see how the change to our procedure affected the inflation rate. And what we found is that in January 2021, because we'd changed our procedure and tried to estimate pandemic spending, it increased the annual rate of inflation by 0.1 percentage points relative to what it had been, would have been, had we used 2019 data purely. That's all. So thank you for listening. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chris. You run over slightly, but we have the time for some questions. And can I just remind people who are asking questions to introduce themselves before they ask them, please? So I I think the questions that we have, you've partly answered in your presentation, but some clarifications here. So can we go to Sheila Page, please?
Thank you, Sheila Page. I wanted to ask you about the effect of effectively ignoring the goods which are not available. An alternative way would be to treat these as having such a high price that people weren't buying them. And that would give you a rather higher, excuse me, a higher number. Did you do any tests to see if that would have an effect?
We didn't, no. But I think that Kevin Fox has done some research on this. So I think this is reservation prices we're talking about, right? So it's something Kevin Fox has been looking at, and I think he's put out a paper on it. So that, I mean, that would be interesting to look at. We didn't, yeah, we didn't consider it as as part of our sort of main approach to to measuring inflation.
Does that mean that your estimates are effectively a lower bound?
I think that, I wouldn't necessarily say a lower bound. It kind of depends on what you would set the target as and how you impute. And because because of the way that we've chosen to impute using using effectively the the sort of headline inflation rate to have a negligible impact, depending on whether you take the monthly growth or the annual growth and how those growths are behaving, you could have potentially had a lower estimate. So I don't think I would say that it's a lower estimate, no. I think reservation prices would give you an upper estimate if you used them. But I think it's a little bit more sort of complicated than that, I guess.
I I just wondered if you, wouldn't it be worth trying, even just on a fairly informal basis, to see how much difference it made?
Yeah, no, it would be an interesting area to to look at, yeah. We can certainly give that some thought, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And can we go to Tony Cox next? I think this also links to imputations, so very related.
Hi, yeah, Tony Cox, I chair the RPI CPI user group. Thanks very much, Chris. Very interesting presentation. Actually, I really wanted to ask a more general question, because this was a pretty unprecedented situation for you in terms of measuring prices. But I did just wonder, is there anything from history that you could learn from? I mean, it's hard to think of a a similar experience. But I was wondering if anything perhaps from a wartime measurement of inflation, if there are any lessons there that you could take on board.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. That's an interesting question. I think it's hard to see if anything that's happened quite like this. You know, certainly within my lifetime. I think, I mean, the war is an interesting one. You would expect that there would be some quite significant sort of changes to the basket in that kind of situation and potentially even areas of the basket that are unavailable in the the same sense that we have unavailable items now. I think going back as far as the Second World War, the the problem is one of historical information or lack of. So even looking back at the retail prices index, that didn't really begin, even in its interim form, didn't begin until 1947. So really, we have very little information about what happened over the course of the Second World War. You don't know an awful lot about the retail prices index. We don't have microdata or anything like that, going back to its sort of early series. So we have even less based on the cost of living index that they were using at the time. So yes, I think it would be interesting. I mean, I guess the one thing I would say, the one thing we do know about the cost of living index that was used at the time of the Second World War, is that they hadn't updated the basket in decades. And that was one of the reasons that the retail prices index came in, was so that they could run a continuous household budget survey and keep spending sort of relevant to what people are buying. So I think, I think perhaps whatever happened in the Second World War, if we did, if we did know how they approached it, it might not be that good an indicator anyway, because things have moved on considerably since then. But it is an interesting thought.
Trust you're going to document what's been done now for future.
Yeah, we're certainly trying to. So yeah, we've put out lots of articles explaining what we've done in quite a lot of detail, and they seem to have landed quite well with users. So I'm optimistic that there's plenty of information out there in the public domain, should it be needed again in future, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone, both on the audience for all your questions, and especially to all our panelists, so Chris, Catherine, Joe, Amy and Natalie. Thank you very much for the very interesting presentations. And just to say, the discussion can now continue in the discussion room afterwards, and some of the panelists are available to attend. So do join that if you're interested in carrying on the conversation. Thank you very much, all.